All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners back in session on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. It's 10:07 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Ween Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Emily Klaus, participating virtually with our County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. The agenda this morning is to primarily review, first review of tomorrow afternoon Board meeting agenda. We'll take another look at it tomorrow and probably quickly if necessary, but this is first review for these items because we've been out of board sessions for three weeks. Public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel, and we're in session until noon. So first up will be to call the meeting to order tomorrow afternoon. Commissioner Mejia to lead Pledge of Allegiance, approval of the agenda, opportunity for public to address the Board, and County Manager update, anything you're anticipating County Manager?
No, no updates at this time.
Yes, Commissioner Mejia?
I'm not sure if we're going to receive public comment in regards to timber sale industries tomorrow. And so there was a message going around on social media about that. So I was wondering, as we're looking at the agenda, is it wise for us to move some items from our department items into consent agenda? That way, if we do end up in a two-hour public comment meeting again, we can at least deviate.
We can take a look at that as we go.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to institute new public comment policy like prior to the possible scenario tomorrow.
Yeah.
But there are considerations that we could make when we're in a situation like that. You know, I don't know. I guess you can say, hey, you know, there's a pressure relief valve and that's what this is. Or you can do things where like, hey, everybody's talking about the same thing. Designate one speaker. You know, like, there's guidelines we could review in those situations. But I don't know if everybody just thinks it's better to sometimes just let everybody talk.
Yeah, we'll see how many folks. I mean, the one thing we typically do, because we expanded from three to four minutes, we usually contract to three or even two if there's a certain quantity of people signed up. Beyond that, we've never done anything more, you know, aggressive about public comment. The stuff that I saw on social media was related to exactly the issues that we had received a letter, a couple of letters about. And then I had written that response letter, so I was going to have a stack of my response letter just so folks could, hey, if you want to know what I think, it's just my response. You guys didn't sign it. But I'd have that available so people can sort of see where I felt the board was coming from on those issues. But we'll see if that's even germane. Sometimes it's not as many people as you expected, or they're sideways. They've got a totally different set of concerns that you didn't anticipate. So just kind of figure that out.
In the flyer that I saw going around, the only thing that really like kind of bothered me was an allegation that we met with like specific interest groups and not others, and that's completely false.
Yeah.
Because we've met with Department of Natural Resources, you've gone out and went to Simpson Timber and had a, like, so there, you know, like, I don't know if there's any way to...
The specific...
To clarify that, because there's been no secret meetings, there's been no collusion. There's, you know, it's like, there's been multiple different parties that have come in and spoke to the Board.
The specific meeting that I saw reference was in response to a meeting we had with DNR. Yeah. That meeting was not like, that meeting was requested and granted because we had had a really substantial meeting from DNR, and there was a feeling that we didn't get all the information that we wanted. So we heard from other parties about that in a public meeting. So, and we've had many more meetings with DNR than we've had with any, you know, advocacy groups.
I've got a quick question on that. Have we, have we had any confirmation that any of the junior taxing districts have actually lost any money yet? I mean, that was always my big concern, junior taxing districts stood to lose money. But did we ever get any confirmation? I mean, there's a possibility or something, I guess. Did we ever get any confirmation from any of the districts that because of X we lost money? Because that was my big concern.
Right. I'm trying to remember. There was a Juno sale, which was really paused for slightly different reason. And I didn't, can't remember if that one ended up going forward. That was a year and a half ago.
Juno ended up going forward?
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that one was a non-issue. And then there was carrot and cabbage patch, which wouldn't have been, which had, they're temporarily paused, but had they gone forward as scheduled, they'd still, the money wouldn't have come forward yet. I mean, it's still...
It hasn't come through yet.
Would have processed, there would have been a sale and a timber and then, I mean, so that hasn't actually manifested yet, although it could, I think.
I mean, it's only temporary paused until, I believe, this fall.
Cabbage Patch.
And one of the primary reasons it was paused was because of the state initiative, and we submitted those two names for consideration under the program, and I cannot think of it right now.
Yeah, the Climate Commitment Act money, if, if, if we were going to be able to include that, then it would be, there would be other lands purchased to replace those lands, which would fully compensate the beneficiaries. So we don't know, but that won't, we don't know about that until the voters decide whether the, because it was, the legislature made a contingent on the voters not repealing the Climate Commitment Act. Otherwise, that money wouldn't be available. So that's to be determined basically later this year, and that one could very well go forward as scheduled. Or it could be replaced and included in that program, which again, was, that program's designed to keep beneficiaries whole. So that really just boils it down to carrot. And carrot, there's a, there's a hearing this month, I thought. I don't know, I've been gone, I just got back to town, but I seem to remember there was a July hearing in court to determine the status of that sale. Okay, so we'll have public comment likely on that, and we'll figure out that tomorrow. No other County Manager update is coming? Okay. Then we'll look at consent items. Right now, we have A through E. And A is proclamation for BIPOC Mental Health Awareness Month. And I believe this was one of those ones that we added late, so we're doing it, we'll sign it, we'll acknowledge it. It'll be processed through, and we'll get that distributed to the right folks, but it won't be a formal proclamation presentation. Any questions on that? Okay. Item B is a CPED item, interlocal agreement with City of Yelm for critical area permit processing. Is CPED staff available?
I think there might have been some confusion about potentially doing an executive session prior to the agenda review.
Got it, got it. Let me skip this one and go to the next. Okay, let me pause here. I do have an email sitting in front of me. Are we doing, are we adding an executive session to this morning's agenda?
I will be requesting one towards the end of the agenda.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be on the agenda. We can make that mention. Okay. Well, that, okay, very good. Okay, so Assistant County Manager Gelder is checking with CPED. Let's move on for now to item C, Public Works. Resolution and call for sealed bids for steel bridge fabrication for Shawn Drive Southwest at unnamed tributary to Dempsey Creek Fish Passage. That's a lengthy title, mouthful, and Matt Unsmann is here, County Engineer.
Again, Matt Unsmann, Thurston County Engineer. Marcus Dorick will be presenting this for Public Works tomorrow afternoon. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sale bids for a contract to fabricate and supply a steel bridge for Shawn Drive over an unnamed tributary to Dempsey Creek. Shawn Drive comes off of Delphi Road, which is adjacent to Capital Forest. This project was identified in our fish barrier, our fish passage, passage program. We're proposing replacing a three-foot diameter culvert with a 33-foot long bridge. Once constructed, fish will have an additional 1.7 miles of stream habitat. Ordering and manufacturing the bridge in advance will save eight months of lead time and allow for a streamlined construction schedule. This action will allow Public Works to contract for the manufacture and delivery of this bridge in preparation for awarding a construction contract for the bridge itself in 2025. The bridge estimated cost to deliver and fabricate is $110,000, which we would utilize REIT II funding to pay for.
Questions about this one?
Is this a paved road or a gravel road?
Paved road.
And it serves residences?
Mm-hmm.
No chance we can put a railroad car there? They're pretty cheap. Price of metal.
I was wondering if at a future meeting, not necessarily this, you know, at this point, but if we could sort of, you know, we've had a lot of fish passage projects just kind of coming at us ad hoc. And I know you guys kind of have a priority list of those, and can we sort of see like, how many are going and which ones are coming up and?
We actually have a board session scheduled to go through our fish passes program. I believe it's later, early August to mid-August, I believe, so.
Perfect. You're in my brain. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're overdue for a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to kind of get a sense of it, because I kind of got lost in, you know, how many we got going and which ones would be, you know, talking about how we do that.
They're making a lot of great progress. When we see the projects come forward, it's exciting to see.
It is. Any other questions for Matt on 3C? Okay, thank you. DNE, our auditor voucher list for the weeks of June 17th and June 24th. Questions from the Board? Any items unusual?
No. And then Chair, we have Brett here from CPED.
Okay, let's double back to CPED item 3B.
Good morning. Thank you so much.
Interlocal agreement with City of Yelm for critical area permit processing.
Thank you. Brett Purse, Development Services Manager with Community Plan and Economic Development. My apologies, I was not aware that this meeting was happening, so I apologize for not being here. So the request is for what's called the Yelm Loop. It is a road construction project to continue the completion of the Yelm Loop itself. The request is for permitting services to be conducted by the City of Yelm for those parcels located in the county. This is a City of Yelm initiated request to the Board of County Commissioners for that permitting process. It has, this interlocal agreement has been reviewed by legal staff, also signed by legal staff, and the copy that you have received also has been signed by the mayor and their attorney as well. So in typical process for permitting services to be conducted by other jurisdictions, staff follow the procedure of reviewing the ILA, ensuring that it meets all the requirements associated with an agreement, and then reviewed and signed by the prosecutor's office.
And is something we've done before for this project, but in a different base?
Yes, sir. Well, we've done this type of work before, but not necessarily for the Yelm Loop itself that I'm aware of. The City of Yelm did request previously, later in 2023, permitting services for a very small project to where the stormwater pond of a project is located in the county, but the actual drive-through espresso stand was in the city. And so we, the Board voted to allow for an interlocal agreement for the permitting services to be conducted by the City of Yelm.
This is specifically referencing critical area permit, and I'm just wondering on that, like, aren't we really the subject matter experts on the county's critical area ordinance? I mean, is there any issue with Yelm staff not having the knowledge they need or the experience to do that efficiently or accurately?
I'm not aware of any inefficiencies that the City of Yelm can provide. Additionally, this is a federal project which went through the NEPA process, and the NEPA process is the federal version of our SEPA process, so environmental review has been already conducted.
Any other questions for Brett? Okay, thank you.
Again, apologies for not being here early. Thank you.
Okay, first, next up is 4A, Information Technology Contract Renewal for Open Gov Maintenance and Licensing. Sherry Ilk, IT Director, to brief the Board.
Good morning. Sherry Ilk, IT Director. I invited Chris Keller to come along. He's our technical manager. I am looking for approval to renew our Open Gov contract. Open Gov is the tool we use for reporting and transparency on the internet. So our budget information gets posted on there using this Open Gov. The contract is for three years and a total of $161,812. We collect for this in our rates, and it's already accounted for in our budget.
Sounds like a potential consent item?
Yeah.
Since we've got, okay, remove that. I see a lot of thumbs up. Let's move 4A to consent agenda. Anything else to cover? You got the next item?
The next item?
Let's go, next item, Contract Renewal with Pure Storage.
Again, this is a renewal of an existing contract that we have. Pure Storage is our data storage, and this is another three-year contract for a total of $58,810. I know, it's so exciting. So we're all of our data stored.
Is that kind of like the cloud?
It's our version of the cloud.
Our version of the cloud.
It's our on-premise version. Yes.
How long have we had it?
Yeah, the fog and the...
How long have we had it?
Four years. And there's a harbor refresh every time, every year with it. It happens. It's a great company. We've done good things with it.
Any questions on pure storage? Could that go to consent agenda? All right.
All right.
Emily said, okay, all Commissioners agree. We'll move 4A and B.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Public Health and Social Services, 5A, Vital Housing Courtside Apartments Funding Award Approval. Alex Purse from PHSS. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alex Purse, and I am the Affordable Housing Program Manager. And I am here this morning to ask you to approve the funding recommendation from the Regional Housing Council to fund the Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Acquisition and Preservation Project as presented in their application for a total of $1,357,699.15 and authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue an award commitment letter. So a little bit of background on this item. Vital Housing responded to Thurston County's request for proposals for affordable housing capital projects back in April. The Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board reviewed and filed their application. They discussed the project at their April 25th meeting. They recommended funding the project, but they, they requested a little bit of more information about the project, so this funding recommendation was contingent upon receiving this information and approving it. So Vital Housing responded to this request, and then the advisory board discussed this item at their June 11th meeting, or their June 20th meeting, excuse me. They unanimously approved the motion to fund the project upon receiving this additional information. Staff then took this recommendation through the Regional Housing Council meeting on June 26th. The RHC unanimously approved the advisory board's recommendation to fund the Vital Housing project, and we are now recommending to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the Regional Housing Council's recommendation. So this project is, the proposal is to acquire and preserve 112 units of affordable housing at the Courtside Apartments in Olympia. The organization also plans to update the units to achieve more energy efficiency. The apartments are currently rent restricted due to tax credit financing, which is set to expire in 2026. So the acquisition of this property later this year by Vital Housing will preserve these units of affordable housing within Thurston County. So once the project is fully funded and has met all of our pre-contract requirements, the Office of Housing and Home Management will come back to you all to request authorization to sign this contract for this award. I'm happy to answer any...
Any questions or from the Board?
Is it pass-through money?
This money will be local dollars.
From?
From our 5386 local, no, from our local home fund, excuse me.
Okay. Okay, so, did you say 112 units? I'm sorry, I missed that number.
We'll get back to it. Yes, 112 units.
So right now, because of the tax credit financing, they have restriction on the rent they can charge, but that will expire in 2026? Is that...
Yes, so...
So this extends that?
So yes, the, the current owner of the property, they are looking to sell it because the Lura or the tax credit is expiring. And so they're looking to sell it, and if their plan is to sell it to Vital Housing, so that Vital Housing will keep it affordable, but if Vital Housing does not acquire the property, then they are planning to take it to the open market, and then therefore, they would possibly not remain affordable.
So, I mean, so Vital Housing is the applicant, is some kind of a, is it a nonprofit? I've never heard of it, so is it a nonprofit?
Yes, it is a newer agency to our area. They do have other projects within the State of Washington. They are a, they're not a nonprofit, but they are an agency that looks to acquire affordable housing development... They are a, they're not a nonprofit, but they are an agency that looks to acquire affordable housing developments that are going to expire to retain their affordability. So this is one that they're looking to add to their portfolio.
And then? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Is that the end result, is that going to maintain a hundred and twelve units of affordable housing or create a hundred and twelve units of affordable?
Will maintain.
I, I really think that ought to say that in this action, that, so the public knows what those dollars are going for and that they're actually getting something here. Oftentimes, where there's a lot of things we do moving forward, but here it sounds like we've already got something and we're gonna help to continue that funding. As taxpayers, they'd like to know what their money's being used for.
Commissioners, we can, we can work with Jen and Alex and have that added in.
Into the, excuse me, sorry, into the action itself? Because in the AAF, it does say to preserve.
Yeah, but most people don't see that. I just thought in, in this.
Into the motion?
Yeah, the motion. Most people don't, this is what they see. They don't see it back there. I, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, easy, easy suggestion for, it's like adding a couple of words, if we can accomplish that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Item five B is Amendment Number Two of the Developmental Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Moffitt, Public Health and Social Services. Good morning. This is an amendment to our biannual contract with the Developmental Disabilities Administration, and it is for both Thurston and Mason Counties. And it helps us, or it allows us to provide services to people with developmental disabilities in employment, community inclusion, and school-to-work services. And Commissioner Edwards, it's pass-through money. It is, it does provide the administrative funding as well, of course, to administer.
Just a clarifying question. In the agenda itself, it has a very interesting number, that I wasn't sure if it was fifteen million or fifteen thousand, could we clarify what that number is?
There's a missing comma. I think there's a period where there should be a comma.
There's two, yeah, there's two periods.
There's two periods, and so I wasn't really sure what was the number.
Very big number.
It's a very big number.
It's not that big. So the, for the, for the biennial contract, it would be the fifteen million, and for this amendment, it would, it's, it's increased to seven point five two nine million.
You seem to revise the comma. The period after forty-six should be a comma.
I might have the wrong.
Let me show you. Mine's right here. Fifteen thousand, it's probably four.
Okay, yeah, I don't have that one in this one.
Okay, so.
Okay. This one's older. Okay, yeah, we'll fix that.
We'll fix it together.
Okay.
Commissioner, hand.
Just to clarify, Mark, so how much is the, how much are we getting, I guess, or how much is the pass-through funds?
The, the increase is the seven million five hundred and twenty, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And a portion of that is for administrative services, for us to actually administer the contract.
And so do the, can I ask one, one additional question? The organizations that we're already partnering with, so that means they're getting additional funding? Or are you gonna be doing another RFP? Are you just gonna be supplementing contracts you already have?
So we do an annual contract with our providers, so that's Morningside, and you'll see that in the next, next agenda item. Morningside, EFI, Career Quest, Center Force, and Bodis. So we do an annual with them, and this is, this is the money that we're gonna be putting into those contracts.
And that's the next item?
Yes.
Okay, well, we've got another item then. Let's go to that item. C, five C, professional services agreements for supported employment, high school transition, job, foundation, and community inclusion services. Back to you, Mark.
Thank you, and I do see the decimal point on this one. So this is using the, the money from the previous agenda item from the Developmental Disabilities Administration to provide these services. So we don't actually provide direct services at the county. We contracted out, and we've contracted with the five agencies. Again, Career Quest, Morningside, Center Force, Bodis, EFI, I think I got them all. And so we, we break this budget down based on the number of clients, their QD level, and their working status, and we put that, that money into the budget, into their contracts. And this is to, to provide the employment, the inclusion, and school-to-work direct services to, to our, to our clients in both Thurston and Mason Counties.
Any questions on five C? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Five D, last item from Public Health, amended interdepartmental agreement with Superior Court for Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds. Shailen Sowers, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shailen Sowers, and I'm the Behavior Health Fund Program Manager with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. As you know, Thurston County receives an allocation of Criminal Justice Treatment Account, also known as CJTA funding, from the Washington State Healthcare Authority, approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. This funding is managed by Public Health and Social Services and must be spent on substance use disorder treatment and recovery support services for individuals involved in the criminal justice system. Our most recent contract with the Healthcare Authority is for the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five state fiscal years. As you also know, state law requires that a local CJTA panel of representatives from Superior Court, Drug Court, Public Defense, the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, and a substance use treatment provider develop a plan on how to use these funds. And this plan is approved by the Commissioners, and for the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five contract was approved back in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Based on current spending levels, we're projecting about ninety thousand dollars underspent in CJTA for the two thousand and twenty-four state fiscal year. And since we're in our first year of the biennial contract with the Healthcare Authority, we are permitted to roll underspent funds into the next fiscal year. And per the local panel's recommendations, we're asking that the board authorize an amendment to the DUI Drug Court Agreement of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars to add an additional thirty-five thousand dollars in CJTA funds between July first, July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, for a total of one hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is to go towards their new treatment services contract with Pierce County Alliance, and I'll pass it to Sabrina Craig, DUI Drug Court Manager, to provide more details on the proposed increase.
Thank you. And good morning, Commissioners. I was just before you recently requesting an, an increase for our treatment services contract to end the, this period of the contract, and I will be bringing another contract before you shortly in response to our recent RFP, and adding funds to that contract from our last contract period to cover the costs of our administrative personnel and our treatment services. Those are not due-for-service positions. Those are positions that are, are funded by our treatment provider to do the administrative support for the services that we provide in the DUI Drug Court program, including the, the data collection for the Criminal Justice Treatment Account, and all of our UA services, which cover not only the DUI Drug Court observations, but our, our other therapeutic courts as well. Those, and those positions have not had a raise in, I want to say, like, since I've been here, so nine years, bitch.
Commissioner, here.
Thank you. I guess I'm gonna request two things for the future, for future briefings. One is maybe a breakdown on the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Funds. We heard about this last year, and there was a little bit of confusion in terms of the funds, and I, I kind of want to see how much we're getting, what's the breakdown of it, and have a little bit more of an update on those funds. And then, as I'm hearing Sabrina talk, I think it's also good for the board to know basically the breakdown of our therapeutic courts and all the funds that are going into our therapeutic courts. I know that there's treatment sales tax, general fund, but seeing that breakdown on what is funding our therapeutic courts currently, and, because they're doing great work. I mean, Sabrina has, I can't believe it's been nine years, Sabrina, but, you know, she's been doing an amazing job with DUI Drug Court at Superior Court, and really having that therapeutic court running with limited resources and just really stretching as much as possible. So seeing, I think, the breakdown of our therapeutic courts and how much they're receiving from each of the funds would be really helpful to me, and if no one else is interested, it's something that may be.
Could that be a topic for our Superior, our kind of monthly Superior Court?
Well, it also involves District Court, because there's split between.
Oh, because we've got the, yeah.
Yeah, we have Veterans Court, we have Mental Health Court, and so I know that there's just a lot of different sources that come into it, and so as we're talking about our therapeutic courts and future funding, I kind of want to see what, what's already in.
There might be a way to structure that.
Yeah, we can work to get that breakout for you, and then if we want a deeper briefing or something for the Commissioners, we can work with the players to come and have that briefing.
I mean, just, this is, this is a slightly tangential topic, but to me, that was kind of the, one of the just, one of the arguments for the structure of our new schedule was to have those kind of allocated departmental times, and then when topics come up, they're plugged in rather than, than scrambling around to find, you know, places on everyone's schedule to add something on.
Sure.
So that might fit, and if District Courts, Superior Courts, which aren't always together, maybe for, for one month, they can be together to, to try to accommodate this, just as a suggestion. Okay, thanks, Sabrina. Sounds like we're, are there questions on this item? Okay, thank you. Shailen, also thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Public Works. Six A is a contract award for Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal, Green Cove Creek.
Oh, are we okay with five D going on the consent agenda?
Anyone like to see five D stay on the department items?
Five D?
The one we just covered? Okay, no objection to putting five D on consent. Okay, six A is Green Cove Fish Passage. Exciting item.
It is an exciting, big day. Public Works is recommending the Board of County Commissioners award the construction for the Green Cove Culvert Replacement Project on June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. A total of six bids were received in response to a call for sealed bids. The low-responsive bid was received from Quigg Brothers of Aberdeen, Washington, with a bid amount of six million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand and ninety-six dollars. This project will replace a culvert at Country Club Road that has previously failed. There are eight funding sources for this project. We had to stack a bunch of money on top of one another to get there. We have three point one nine million dollars from the Federal Highways Promoting Resilient Operations for Transformative, Efficient, and Cost-Saving Transportation Protect. We got another two point five from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Culvert Aquatic Organism Passage AOP Program. We have five hundred thousand dollars from Thurston PUD to go towards their work that's included in the project. And then the remaining will come from a combination of REIT II, County Road, and Stormwater Utility Fee Funding. So again, Public Works, we've completed a lot of successful projects with Quigg Brothers in the past, and we're recommending that the Board of County Commissioners award this contract in the amount of six million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand and ninety-six dollars.
So this is, I mean, this is a bridge, right? And, and this, I mean, you, it's, it's described very generically in this item, but this is, can you describe like the scope of what's gonna happen and for this amount of money and so this contract?
This will be one of the bigger bridges in the county when we're done with this project. It's a hundred and fifty feet long. It's post-tension, meaning that they're gonna, they can't bring a hundred and fifty-foot girder into the neighborhood because they can't get around the corners, so they gotta splice three smaller girders in place, and they do that by pulling these cables tight. We gotta, we're removing twenty-five thousand cubic yards of material before we can install the bridge, and then we're doing all kinds of stream enhancement work upstream and downstream of the bridge itself.
Cool project.
It's, in my time here at the county, this probably, it's the neatest project I've been part of.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions?
You don't have to tell all the other projects.
We have lots of pictures.
For sure.
Okay, very good. Six B, right-of-way vacation for alley. Wait, one, one more, I want to go back one more question. I forgot. The bid, is that within our, yeah.
Our engineer's estimate was actually seven million dollars, and this was six point eight, so.
Didn't get the words out, but you knew what I was asking. Thank you.
Good job to Brian Meyer and team in coming up with that. That engineer's estimate, it was pretty close. It's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Is, I just got a quick question. Is that a, would that be worth having, like a one-pager? Couple, just a couple of pictures, and maybe a quick synopsis of what this is and the dollars spent. I think the media ought to cover this as a.
I think so, too.
One of the few thing, I shouldn't say few things, but one of the things that the county is doing well. I mean, that, you know, put a lot of effort into this. This was quite an operation.
Not a rail car. Well, I didn't do the rail car, Gary.
I didn't, you're weird about that, though. Well, I just think it's worth publicizing.
Yeah, because there's the pump, there's the, there's the project side of it, and then there's just the complicated financing piece, which is also an impressive accomplishment by.
Sure.
We need a time-lapse video of.
Yeah, that would be cool.
We're actually planning on doing.
Okay, yeah, that would be awesome.
I agree. I think putting something out on it, and, I, I mean, stuff like with those federal grants going like above and beyond and getting those additional dollars, really, it's been really impressive, and it's very exciting, so.
And just going back, I mean, I think the three of us were here, but like, when this all started, I mean, the community, who we haven't seen much here lately because things are really on track, but at the beginning, when we weren't sure how we were gonna manage this and what we were gonna do, the Neighborhood Association got together and put, didn't they contract for a study of some kind? Or they, they put, I know they had a PowerPoint presentation, and they presented us with a lot of information of their analysis of the different things that made me, you know, for us to make sure we didn't not be aware of. I just, community involvement around this has been pretty, you know, it, it was unique. It wasn't every, every situation that had that type of input and, and organization and effort from the surrounding community, helping us with our decision-making process as we got started. And then it was like, then we figured out what we wanted to do, and then it was like, well, how do we pay for that? And then you guys were, you know, front and center of, of hard work on getting different funding sources and our, our federal, then we got money through our federal.
Yeah.
Delegation, Senator Cantwell.
I think that'll be recognized.
Yeah, so all of that could really be part of a pretty unique story on this project.
Sure. And the community, it's, it's a great community out here. We're actually, as part of our project updates, we're, they're actually taking what we're putting out there and retweeting, re emailing to all their HOA constituents, too, so it's a, it's a, it's a good community.
District three. All right, thank you, Matt.
Set you up, I'm at.
Yep. Okay, then the next item is right-of-way vacation for alley between Lot seventeen to twenty-four in Platte, Boston Harbor. District one.
Okay, so these next three items are for the Board of County Commissioners to consider approving a resolution adopting the findings, conclusions, and recommendation of the hearings examiner regarding three vacations. A hearing examiner report for each requested vacation is included in your agenda packet. The maps attached to those packets are extremely helpful as well. So this, the first item is to approve a resolution adopting the findings, conclusions. So this, the first item is to approve a resolution adopting the findings, conclusions, and recommendation of the hearing examiner to vacate a strip of right-of-way in Boston Harbor. A public hearing was held on the vacation of an alley, which was originally dedicated to Thurston County as part of the original Boston Harbor Platte in 1907. This hearing examiner considered the mandated criteria and determined that, one, the right-of-way was never opened for public travel. Two, it is not necessary to maintain the full width of the right-of-way for public use as the adjacent properties have access from other surrounding roads. And three, the public will benefit by this vacation because the county will be relieved of liability associated with the, with the right-of-way. And the county will receive compensation for the right-of-way based upon the current appraised value. This recommendation was made by the hearings examiner and was subject to, to that the applicant was to pay full compensation for the right-of-way, which was $4,000. So again, this item is for the Board of County Commissioners to approve a resolution adopting the findings, conclusions, and recommendation of the hearings examiner to vacate a strip of right-of-way in Boston Harbor.
Questions?
Yeah, just, how did, how did this happen to get to the hearings examiner? This was a, was that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is, it's when the public, they'll actually, they'll actually request the county to go through with the vacation process and then staff elevates that to the hearings examiner level.
Yeah, and I guess I'm curious why that is because we've done that quite a few other times, just similar type things. I'm not saying they were the same. And so anytime we move something through to the hearings examiner, it's a lot of staff time, it's cost to the hearings examiner, I'm just wondering, why did we do that? As, instead of just coming to the board and saying, hey, we've got this surplus since 1908 or whatever. However, whichever period of time it was, I think out there it was around 1908.
1907, yeah.
Okay, and why did we have to go through all that, extra, those extra gyrations, if you will?
I'm sure there's an answer in statute and that I don't have off the top of my head, so I'm going to have to follow up with you on that one.
I see Craig just was moving there, I don't-
Oh, is Craig on?
I don't know if that meant that he was grabbing something or not, but is that what you were thinking? Craig knew the answer?
You hear the question, Craig, about why this would have been elevated up to the-
You're on mute.
Oh, you're on mute. Commissioner Edwards asked, and I was curious as well, like how, how did this particular issue get elevated to the hearings examiner versus other ones maybe that don't?
So which one are we on? I'm sorry, I just joined. I was in a previous meeting with someone else.
The three right-of-way vacations, B, C, and D, kind of talking about them all, because they all, they all reference hearing examiner recommendation.
And, and all of our road vacations go up to the, to the hearings examiner. We, we go through that, that's part of our process. So, and that gives us the opportunity for road vacations for the public to engage and give comment at that time.
Those other ones then were just pieces of property that we weren't, weren't road vacations. I know we did something similar to this down in Rochester recently, and I think it was alleyways. That was a vacation as well.
That's a road.
I don't remember going to the hearings examiner. That's, I'm, I'm just trying to think, why, why do we have to do that? I'm not against it. If we have to do it, we have to do it. But I like to streamline things for the government whenever we can do it, you know, so it costs taxpayers money to do all this. In this case, maybe it's all being covered by the purchaser, but 4,000 doesn't sound like enough to cover everything under that.
In the Rochester one, I don't remember any hearing examiner involvement.
No. I just don't remember.
So fellas, when we're saying it's our process, is that just an internal county process or is that governed by some type of state requirement or?
County code.
County code. And if you don't have the answer now, no-
You have to have it. All right, I'll follow up on that.
You can follow up and send it, send the information out to-
My question is, does B, C, and D need to be department item or should we send?
It's an email response to you.
Matt, any reason we couldn't do a, put those on consent, these three vacation?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, any objection?
No.
So we'll put B, C, and D. Keeping A for public. All right, then that's it for business items. We have standing items for the commissioner reports. Then, like we have public hearings at 3:30, which we'll break the meeting if we need to. And the first one is Public Works, public hearing to consider application of Pacific Harbors Council, BSA, a non-exclusive franchise for a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system in Thurston County right-of-way.
Okay, Matt Unsmann, Thurston County Engineer. So in May, the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing date of July 16th to consider the application of Pacific Harbors Council, Voice Council of America, a non-exclusive franchise for a water distribution system and sanitary sewer system within the Thurston County right-of-way. Pacific Harbors provides water and sewer connections to its facilities at Camp Thunderburg. The project will install two new utility crossings in the county right-of-way. One crossing at Summit Lake Road for both water and sewer and another on Summit Lakeshore Road Northwest for water only. This project will allow the camp to consolidate 11 separate drain fields into one onsite system and allow future development of a new dining hall.
Any public comments so far?
None.
Okay, so it could be a short hearing potentially. Go ahead.
And, and I think the benefit of this is going to be water quality, isn't it?
Okay, thank you. Okay, and let's look at item two, which is our second public hearing, also Public Works related, to consider application of Cooper's Point Water Company, Inc., same related type issue.
Yep, so in May, the Board of County Commissioners also set a public hearing date to consider a water distribution system for Cooper Point Water Company. The water company provides water connections to 31 privately owned lots at the end of Cooper Point Road. The original water system was installed in 1948 with two and a half inch galvanized pipe. The project will replace a water main with approximately 1,100 feet of new plastic pipe.
Questions on item two and no comments have been received as of yet? So those might be short hearings, but we'll take them up-
And they may move to consent agenda.
That's not going to work. All right, so that takes care of, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Craig. Takes care of review, first review of tomorrow afternoon's agenda. Commissioner Items is up next. I know Commissioner Mihia, you have one.
Yes, I do, I am requesting an executive session for a personnel matter, and so if that's okay with the board. It would take, I would think 15, approximately 15 to 30 minutes, but-
To do this morning?
Yes.
And we have thumbs up from Commissioner Claus. Do we have, is there any possibility of legal counsel?
They are free at 11 o'clock.
Okay, so we'll just, let's try to wrap up other Commissioner Items and then we can go into the executive session, so is there-
Can you specify, because I mean, personnel matters, I don't think qualify for-
Well, it's a personnel, it's a-
How will the attorney make that?
Well, it's a personnel action. It does fall under, you know, it falls under RCW 42.30.1101G. And it's to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee.
There you go.
So.
Yep, got it. That was in the email. Thank you, Amy, for that. Okay, so we got that teed up. Other Commissioner Items?
Jane is here.
Jane's here. I, I wanted to ask real quick, on the afternoon's agenda, we have, on my calendar, there's a Capital Lake Funding and Governance Work Group from 12:30 to 3:30. Then I saw a Commissioner's check-in at 2:30 and there was a note that said, move to 2:30 to accommodate the other one, but there's still a conflict there, so how are we managing those two items? Because that, that'll take, I think, county managers, assistant county managers, Commissioner Mihia, and I'm the alternate and I've been asked to attend as well, so.
Sure. We've let them, the assurary group, know that we can participate for a certain timeframe, so they were going to gear. And so we moved it back, I think, 30 minutes, so we had more time. They've done, and I really appreciate the team for accommodating us, they've allowed us to join by Zoom so that we can spend more time in the meeting and less time traveling. And then we're going to move the pertinent items from the county upfront, so those can be discussed.
So we'll spend two hours together on Zoom with the Capital Lake group and then we'll come back here to do, okay, that answers that. Other Commissioner Items?
Ms. Maria?
Yeah, let me get Maria.
Okay, then it's 10:58. We will now move-
See you guys.
To the executive session pursuant to RCW 4230.1101G to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment or review performance of a public employee. We're anticipating 30 minutes. Board action may follow. And so take a minute or two and then we will kick this off at, in just a couple of minutes. And so take a minute or two and then we will kick this off at just a couple of minutes.
...
All right, 11:29 AM, we're out of our executive session and we have provided direction to staff so there's no formal board action to be taken. We are at the end of the agenda so if there's no further items from the board, we will, and I'm not hearing any, so we're adjourned and we're back in section at 2:30 for a commissary check-in. Thank you.